Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, welcome. Date is December sixth, two thousand twenty-one, time is about seven o'clock AM. Call or order meeting with address in California. Call the role here, council. Council President Glenn.
Here.
Councilman Robinson. Councilmember Zinner.
Yes.
Councilman Boyer.
Here.
Councilman Ringstock. Councilman Warren.
Here.
Anybody please join, pledge allegiance to your country. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which is safe, one nation under God, indivisible, infinite, endless. Thank you very much, sir. If I could ask you to Tyler Green standing, my pleasure to invite Lord Father James O'Driscoll, pastor of St. John's Church. Always a pleasure having you, sir.
Thank you.
Season three to you.
Same to you.
Thank you.
Mayor Martin, honorable city council members. Tonight is the last time I come before you to pray. My work at St. John's Church will wrap up in mid-January. I'm most thankful before God and you for a truly wonderful uplifting and fulfilling experience. And I'm also thankful that Reverend Canon Leslie Hay has been called to serve St. John's and to continue the church's ministry and mission as a public servant church in this community. She's moved into the rectory, she begins in January, and she's here tonight. Welcome. Happy Grace from my short eight-plus years here. It's an exciting, welcoming, diverse, creative, and growing community. I describe it to friends as a little Baltimore. It's a jewel. St. John's Church and this city, its elected official civic leaders and concerned citizens have worked together for over two centuries to meet unmet needs and live up the quality of life of our neighbors in the community. Here are a few examples from recent times. St. John's Towers and St. John's Commons for over fifty years offer subsidized housing for our older neighbors. Twice weekly, we feed about two hundred people. Winter coats are given out every fall. Black History Month is observed every February, and the Ernest Burke sculpture dedicated to an African American native son. The first two Family Day pride events have welcomed large crowds seeking equal recognition, rights, and safety. Fifteen hundred are fed on Thanksgiving Day. We promote and host studio and performing artists. We are a destination for shopping and a delicious meal, and we celebrate one and all in an annual grand Fourth of July parade. And I believe Happy Grace is a special place because it has a compassionate heart and exemplifies its name, a name of grace. Given this spirit of compassion and mercy, I encourage this city to find a way to meet a growing and urgent unmet need, to provide an emergency shelter for single men, offering a meal and a warm bed on a night by night basis. As Jesus said, "Just as you do for the least of these members of my family who are wealthy and needy in their community," you do it for me. I cherish the years here, one of the most fulfilling chapters in forty-six years of our daily ministry. A priest doesn't retire, but we do slow down. In time, may God show me where am I assist. I close with this blessing. I offer this every Sunday. Beloved friends, day by day, embrace whatever is true, whatever is honorable, whatever is just, whatever is pure, whatever is pleasing, whatever is commendable. And of all that is excellent and worthy of praise, continue to think about these things. Do the things that Jesus did. Pray as Jesus prayed. Speak as Jesus spoke love, as Jesus loved. May the God of hope fills us with all joy and peace and believing in the power of the Holy Spirit in this holy Advent season, as we prepare to come into the Lord.
I'm sorry, yeah. Thank you very much. We're still processing the meeting. Glad. Still processing that you, this is your last time here? You're on mission.
I don't miss it.
We'll be out one more person serving station. Item number five of this evening's agenda approval, City Council Meeting Minutes November fifteenth, two thousand twenty-one, council have a motion to approve. Okay. First by Councilmember Zinner, second by Councilmember Martin. Questions, comments? All those that favor say aye.
Aye.
All those say nay. City Council Meeting Minutes of November fifteenth, two thousand twenty-one, carry five zero affirmative. Item B, city, special city council meeting minutes for closed session. November twentieth. I'm sorry, special city council meeting, sorry, not. Special City Council Meeting Minutes of November twenty-second, I got confused with closed session, so. This was the special meeting we had on the twenty.
Just for clarification, those meetings were still, they were being edited, they weren't ready for tonight's meeting, so they'll be ready for this council meeting.
No problem. I just wrote that it's on here already. Okay, so special city council meeting minutes for the November twenty-second, two thousand twenty-one meeting, you have a motion to approve. So move. First by Councilmember Martin, second by Councilmember Boyer. Questions, comments? All those that favor say aye.
Aye.
All those say nay. Special City Council Meeting Minutes of November twenty-second, two thousand twenty-one, carry five zero affirmative. Item number six, comments from citizens. This is a part of the city council meeting. If you're here to comment on agenda item or you have any other comments of any other city business, even if it's not on the agenda, great to have you ready. Sir. Sorry, you didn't fill out the form. Come on, I apologize, I should've called you first.
You're great.
Welcome to the city council meeting survey, please tell your name and address.
This is Mayor, Council President Glenn, and Councilmembers, your leaders, and address meeting. My name is Louis Johnson, I'm going to be the president of the Happy Grace Recreation Committee. We are located at three fifty-one Louis Lane here in Happy Grace. Welcome. Thank you. I want to read from the script so I don't miss anything, normally not my style, but we currently have about fifteen hundred youth, three hundred adults, and three hundred volunteers in our program. On behalf of the Recreation Committee and the two thousand plus people involved, I want to thank the city of Happy Grace in general. I'm sorry to be, Mr. Mayor, and pardon me, the city council, without support of the city, the Recreation Committee pays a month worth of accounting and provides activities for our community. We could not do it without all of you. Most recent, one of our most visible accomplishments is getting our youth into the city gyms. I've got some pictures of them, getting one of the pool youths in the weekend this past week. A lot more days in there through March. To add in, here are special thanks to the evening for you and that cycle for your ability to play with us to make that happen. This was not a simple task, and most will never know the amount of hours we spent making that happen. It was not just immediately unlocked for us. It was greatly appreciated. We got probably two hundred plus kids in there a week in the brushroom. There are many other great people within the city ranks that are also already been called out tonight. I'll take a few minutes to do that. I want to throw the attempts on Ringstock, unfortunately he's not here. He's kind of stepped into a place there of liaison, he's gotten numerous phone calls night to day, emails, texts, they're serving to the great lives of people. Please for help, you folks, thank you, we have to answer. Also, thanks to Councilman Boyer, he grifts, he sets up the help of the Halloween costume on just literally a few minutes' notice, and then all the council members who supported us in the way that most people have never happened in the city. Everybody else, we appreciate it. Thanks for our please for our DPW, you guys, such a handful, this company, and the visitor thing. Those are the folks that helped make our Halloween contest and our Easter economy a huge success. We have probably four hundred and fifty people at the Halloween, and who knows how many people this Easter night, greatly appreciated. Mr. Shane Graham, Colin Fisher, they helped to paint our electronic sign for the company through. We're one of the very few recreation committees in the county that has the electronic sign. We're very blessed with that, and we think remotely that is a huge help. We leave the bonds apart and make provision so that you, the city, can capture the sign in a great emergency situation with a public announcement. Your office department has the access to this for the community. It's appreciated. Jeff Thompson, helps us get our website going. We're not out of the full on our own, without his help, we would have been better out there desperately, get our work out. George Hardy, always trust him, Shepherd, thank you very much. He's been helping, greatly appreciated. A capable, he's had, greatest of whims in hand whenever we're down, and I'm sure what we need to do. Last, and not be something like this, is there are so many city employees that help us out, but the last ones I want to call out are the small group professionals that I deal with the most when it comes to youth. That's Mr. Ray, based on air, can be present in the company more. They feel countless calls from the, their signatures pages, and in general, the TV straight from the business side. So to someone, my point is, thank you. To all of you in this room, the people up here, the community, and those up here listening, we look forward to the same cooperative relationship with you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Felder, appreciate you. Comments? Glad thanks to all those over. Okay, good luck. Thank you. Who else in the audience wishes to address the council this evening? Sir. Welcome, former council member, Mr. Jim Miller. Good to have you here this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Jim Miller, three twenty Lewis Street, one of the original streets of the Play Allen and South Mass, not through a plane, but where they converted farming. I'm here for a couple reasons. One, might be a history lesson for some people up there. It used to be two opportunities for the citizens to get up and speak. And this was done so the citizens could get up and speak on anything that was on the agenda before any business was conducted. So like it is tonight, you have the prayer, approval of the minute, citizen comments and citizens. It was also an opportunity at the end of the meeting for a citizen to make a comment about things that were inspired during the meeting, or something that was forgotten to be mentioned, and I'd like to see you bring that option back at the end of the meeting. Might not get anybody, might just somebody like me might want to come on the top. Tonight you have three or four license agreements. And I've talked here before, and I said, these need to be recorded with the deed and sent to the council. So in the future, there's no, well, I built this deck down here on Lockwood Street, and that's my property and we're going to talk, you know. The original arena was, they built the deck to play kayaks, and that was supposed to be done, that deck was supposed to be removed. I was on the council when that was done. So in the future, it will prevent things like that where people are selling their house, and there are several places, like over on Atigo Street, where there was a house that had a front porch, they put a porch, they created the living space on the porch, they then expanded onto the new set of steps, and the only way the city knew anything about it was the water department to plan because they covered up the water. So when the person goes to sell that house, the deck was supposed to come off, but it keeps being transferred. So that way, if you put it on the deed of restriction, and it's up to the person that owns the property, that's all covered in your Resolution two thousand seven dash ten. It explains all the fees that are filed for this. Somebody wants a license agreement, a lease agreement, there's a current footage fee that they have to pay, all in here. And that's about it. Exactly one thing I noticed when I was looking at the city website today, and you go to some of the pages, and there's information there about the next scheduled meeting was October nineteen ninety-nine, October twenty, twenty, you know, nothing current for the citizens to go up there. And when's the next meeting of this group? I would love, you know, and you could update their IT department a little bit, I know I have plenty of employees who kind of like this. That's all I have. Thank you very much. Oh, Merry Christmas, all happy new year.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. Who else in the audience wishes to address the council? Any comments from the council? We'll move on to item number seven, appointments. We have a few appointments this evening, and we have one reappointment and one appointment for a new appointment. So we're going to start off with the Arts Commission appointment and liaison for the Arts Commission, is Councilmember Zinner.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I make a motion to reappoint Mrs. Luanne Swan for the Arts Commission.
Sir. Council have a motion by Councilmember Zinner, seconded by Councilman Robinson for the reappointment of Mrs. Luanne Swan to the Happy Grace Arts Commission. Question or comments? All those that favor say aye.
Aye.
All those say nay. The reappointment of Mrs. Luanne Swan to the Happy Grace Arts Commission carries five zero affirmative. Item B, Tourism Advisory Board Appointment, Councilmember Martin.
Being Mr. Mayor, Council, I make a motion to add Bambi Johnson as a new member to the Tourism Advisory Board.
Sir. Council have a motion by Councilmember Martin, seconded by Councilmember Robinson. This is for the appointment of Mrs. Bambi Johnson to the Tourism Advisory Board. Questions, comments? Councilmember Martin.
It's a pleasure to, and I'm hoping the council does confirm her appointment, to have Bambi on the Tourism Advisory Board. For those of you that attended the holly golly first Friday, looking at her penguin, she's very, very much involved with everything. The ice festival is coming up, so her input, her help, and volunteer spirit to this community is very, very important, very, very impressive. I look forward to working with her on the Tourism Advisory Board.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Martin. Any other further questions, comments? Councilman Robinson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I've always enthused when citizens are willing to step up and volunteer their time, you know, to make the city a little bit better, and their talents and their expertise, but sometimes appointments just make sense. I think Bambi's is one of those times that it just makes sense. She's already doing a lot with the city in terms of tourism, and I think that this is just going to be one more way to capture some of her spirit and tenacity. So thank you very much for stepping up and willing to serve, and Evo, thank you for all that you do as well, because you're right there with her all in every step of the way. So thank you, Mr. Johnson.
Thank you very much, Councilman Robinson. Any other question, comments? For the appointment of Mrs. Bambi Johnson to the Tourism Advisory Board Commission, all those that favor say aye.
Aye.
All those say nay. Tourism Advisory Board Appointment of Mrs. Bambi Johnson carries five zero affirmative. We're going to go to item number eight, which is the oath of office, and I will ask Mrs. Bambi Johnson to join the office.
Yes.
Mrs. Johnson, thank you very much for being willing to serve the city of Happy Grace, and congratulations on being voted in. So just want to tell you real quick, what we're going to do is we're going to administer you of the office for this commission. What I want to ask you to do is to raise your right hand and repeat after me. When I say the word aye, please repeat the word aye, but also say. Aye?
Aye.
Swear that I will fulfill.
Swear that I will fulfill.
The requirement for the office of bachelor's senior.
The requirement for the office, I am a bachelor's senior.
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will faithful.
That I will faithful.
And bear true allegiance.
And bear true allegiance.
To the state of Maryland.
To the state of Maryland.
And support the Constitution.
And support the Constitution.
And laws thereof.
And laws thereof.
That I will faithfully and passionately.
That I will faithfully and passionately.
Without fear of favorable prejudice.
Without fear of favorable prejudice.
As far as news.
As far as news.
And in memory.
And in memory.
Of the Happy Grace board in the life.
Of the Happy Grace board in the life.
That's my vote.
That's my vote. Thank you.
One more question, is that by her real quick? The state of the city. All school people, to serve the city, cool clap. So very proud of you, and we're excited to have you on the Tourism Advisory Board. Thank you so much for being willing to share your time, because I know you have very little time, so we're happy to have you. How about competition real quick? You very much want to jump up here?
No, it's okay.
Thank you, Councilmember Martin. We're going to go to item nine, recognitions, this evening we have new recognitions. Item ten, proclamations, we have new proclamations here. Number eleven will be presentations, and this evening we have new presentations. Texas, item twelve, resolutions. We have several resolutions on the agenda this evening, we have four of them actually. So we're going to start with the charter resolution, number two ninety. And we're going to hand this off to Councilmember Ringstock, who is not here this evening, but stepping in to form the role of Councilmember Ringstock. It's Council President Glenn.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to introduce for second reading Charter Resolution number two ninety to authorize annexation of pre-parcels on Plasky Highway.
Sir. Council have a motion to introduce an ordinance, seconded from a resolution, have a motion to introduce a resolution, seconded by Councilman Robinson. This is Charter Resolution two ninety to authorize annexation of pre-parcels on Plasky Highway. Questions or comments? Questions or comments on the introduction? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those say nay. Motion to introduce Charter Resolution two ninety, carries five zero in the affirmative. Charter Resolution two ninety to authorize annexation of three parcel on Pulaski Highway. Second reading. A resolution by the Mayor City Council of Haveringes, Maryland, adopted pursuant to the authority of Maryland Constitution Article eleven E and provisions of the Annotated Code of Maryland. Local government Article subtitle three, amendment or repeal of charter and subtitle four. Annexation authorized a legislative body of municipal, of municipality to annex property extending the boundaries of municipality by resolution, to amend the city charter specifically, appendix A of the Haveringes Charter by adding subsection A five thirty-six. The first two thousand twenty-one addition to the city boundaries. Along with a legal description of the acres of land which will enlarge the boundaries of the city of Haveringes, to include three parcels located southeast of Pulaski Highway, consisting of three properties known as seventeen fifty Pulaski Highway, seventeen fifty-four Pulaski Highway, and a three point eight five acre vacant parcel, for a total of six point eight three two acres, more or less. Council have a motion to adopt Charter Resolution on second reading. First by Council President, seconded by Councilmember Robertson. Questions or comments? House President.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This authorizes the annexation of three parcels on Route forty, approximating six point eight acres. We've had a first reading, the public hearing, and this is the following second reading.
Thank you very much, Council President. Any other questions or comments? All right, everybody. This is gonna be a roll call vote on Charter Resolution two ninety. Councilmembers enter.
Yes.
Councilmember Martin.
Yes.
Councilmember Boyer.
Yes.
Councilmember Robertson.
Yes.
Council President Glenn.
Yes.
By roll call vote of five zero in the affirmative, Charter Resolution two ninety concerning authorized annexation of three parcel on Pulaski Highway is adopted on second reading. Thank you very much, Council. Item B, a counter resolution concerning license agreement. House President Glenn.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I introduce government resolution concerning a license agreement for use of Pearl Street right of way at seven eleven North Stock Street for a deck and screen room.
Council, I have a motion by Council President, seconded by Councilmember Robertson. This is a motion to introduce a license agreement for Pearl Street right of way at seven eleven North Stock Street. Questions or comments on the introduction? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those say nay. Motion to introduce Counter Resolution carries five zero in the affirmative. So, this is Counter Resolution concerning license agreement for use of Pearl Street right of way at seven eleven North Stock Street for a deck and screen room. A resolution by the Mayor City Council of Haveringes, Maryland pursuant to the local government Article of the Annotated Code of Maryland and section thirty-three and thirty-four of the city charter for use of Pearl Street right of way for a deck and a screen room. Council, do I have a, this is gonna be, Resolution two thousand twenty-one dash twenty-one. Two thousand twenty-one dash twenty-two. I have a motion to adopt. Say it. First by Council President, seconded by Councilmember Robertson. Questions or comments? Councilmember Martin.
Mr. Mayor, um, line twenty-eight, twenty-nine, in this, the deck screen, right about safety, welfare, and public, and services, general purposes. I don't see where that does that. And I'll note is, our city attorney's that chance on this one. I just don't see where emerging any help safety or welfare of the public.
Generally, if you say that when we're doing license agreements, we're assuming justification of the license agreement, and you need to have the common point of reference that people are imposing their structures.
Councilmember Martin. House President Glenn.
Um, basically, uh, this is, uh, situation that, uh, we had some comments from citizens. I think, uh, Mr. Brim, and, um, I've had a chance to address their concerns regarding this. Basically, it's a replacement of a deck and screen room that's already there, but there was some concerns that came forward. So I just wanted, you, you, the kids have fun on that side.
Sure. Thanks, Council President Glenn. I did receive comments from Joe Kupfer, which I believe came to council and then were copied to me regarding the placement of this screen room property adjacent to seven eleven North Stock Street. The property where the screen room will be located is the dead end of a paper street. It will never be continued in any fashion at all. We'd have to go through several homes. I don't know why a hundred years ago a morgue was set up that way, uh, but certainly it will never be used at any time in the future that I can see. Mr. Kupfer had some concerns about the continuance of allowing structures in the city right of way. But I think by policies for very many years, where it's appropriate, the city has supported that for the betterment of the city, and also to allow persons that have certain situations, such as this property where the home is right up against the property line. And in fact, I believe at least one corner of that home is in the paper right of way as well already. So they really don't have any ability to have a true backyard, so it is giving some use of the property that otherwise they wouldn't be able to have. I also researched the thought for this property to take a look at some history. And as it relates to this property, not this current property, but many years ago, there were license agreements for, I believe, a shed, a, children's playset, and another structure that was all approved by this council thirty, thirty-five years ago. At that time, the city attorney, Frank Kurtz, said that, uh, the city had no objection to it, and the city supports those types of uses that they can accommodate, help adjacent property owners to give them some beneficial use of their property, or enhance their property, which also in turn enhances the city and helps to improve property value. So, I, I don't see any problems with it. I spoke with Director of Public Works, Tim Woody, when the license agreement came in. He did not have any objections, or, I don't think Mr. Woody could see any need for that property, uh, for any use by the city at any time in the future. So, to sum up my comments, I believe that this is a beneficial use of the city property, improved property values. There's no impact to any city resources or city property that would be negative in any way. And so, while I appreciate Joe Kupfer's, Mr. Kupfer's comments, I don't see any validity to denying this request based on these comments. That's all.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much, Council President. Any other questions or comments? Councilmember Robertson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think, uh, former Councilmember Miller brings up a good point about making sure that this is included with the deed. Is there any issue with doing so?
So, they have, since I've been on board, we have not done that with license agreements. I know in the past they were done sometimes. There was no consistency. So, uh, basically, uh, I've been working with Shane, and I think we are in the middle of coming up with a policy, a resolution twenty, twenty twenty dash twenty-one, I believe it is. Uh, came up with an interim solution, but I think ultimately the charter's gonna be needed to be amended and have it more consistent. I think long term, the council needs to look at whether, um, the property should just be deeded over to the property owners, and then we can collect the additional tax monies, because we have a lot of these properties around town. And then the other problem we're facing is a lot of them are grand, quote-unquote, grandfathered in by prior councils, and then we're stuck with what was done with prior councils. So we've been moving toward, I don't know if you've noticed, all of our license agreements are five years or less, in part, and they're all renewable by December thirty-first. So the idea is that each year we will review them so we can get a handle on how many of these are out there. If we find any new encroachments, we're requesting license agreements for any, any encroachments we come upon that are already existing. And then I don't think we've been granting any new ones, uh, at least the past couple of years, we've been kinda getting a handle on that. So the goal is to get toward a policy that going forward won't infringe on the rights of people who are already encroaching, because they kinda have some grandfather rights there. But it's not, it's not legally binding. It's more like what, what is the council previously done? And so we run into this problem. If we recorded the five-year license agreements, they're only good for five years, so they have to get renewed anyway. So whether those are recorded and land records are in-house, they're, they're just to the person. They don't go with the property. If they were in land records, it would go with the property. So that's kind of the difference.
Yeah, I guess, uh, you know, the issue that comes up is land ownership changes over time. And I think that, uh, maybe part of what Mr. Miller was breaking up is that, uh, you know, for people to know that that's a license agreement, that there's a license agreement in place on that piece of your property, um, you know, that there should be a mechanism. And it sounds like the city would, uh, send some kind of correspondence to the property owner at, at the time that it needs to be renewed.
Generally, how it works is typically when you buy a house, there'll be a title search. I guess if you don't get the title search, you wouldn't necessarily pick it up. But if you have a title search done, you would see it's encroaching, and at that point, the city would be contacted and say, hey, we see there's an encroachment. Oh, we've got this license agreement. So there's a way to find out by purchasers of the property. And the sellers are on notice, or the people who have these license agreements under a current license form or agreements, they are only to the individual who the license is with. They are not transferable. So any purchaser would have to come to the city and, and get approval for a new license.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Robertson. Any other questions or comments on Resolution two thousand twenty-one dash twenty? Council, roll call vote. And this is gonna be a roll call vote on Counter Resolution two thousand twenty-one dash twenty-one concerning license agreements for seven eleven North Stock Street. Councilmember Robertson.
Yes.
Council President Glenn.
Yes.
Sorry, Council. Councilmember Martin.
Yes.
Councilmember Zimmer.
Yes.
Councilmember Boyer.
Yes.
By roll call vote of five zero in the affirmative, Counter Resolution two thousand twenty-one dash twenty-one is approved. Okay, item C, Counter Resolution concerning license agreement for use of right of way at seven ten Lafayette Street. Council President.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I move to introduce Counter Resolution concerning license agreement for the use of the right of way at seven ten Lafayette for landscape.
Say it. Council have a motion by the Council President, seconded by Councilmember Robertson. This is a motion to introduce Counter Resolution concerning license agreement, seven ten Lafayette. Questions or comments on the introduction of this resolution? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those say nay. Counter Resolution concerning right, concerning license agreement for use of right of way at seven ten Lafayette Street carries five zero in the affirmative. Council, this is gonna be Resolution two thousand twenty-one dash twenty-two. A resolution by the Mayor City Council of Haveringes, Maryland pursuant to the local government Article of the Annotated Code of Maryland and section thirty-three and thirty-four of the city charter for planning of shrubs within the city right of way at the corner of Lafayette and Union Streets. Council, I have a motion to adopt two thousand twenty-one dash twenty-two. Say it. Council President, seconded by Councilmember Boyer. First by Council President, seconded by Councilmember Boyer. Questions or comments on the resolution? Council President.
I just want to make note, what's the number? Two thousand twenty-one dash twenty-two. And just make note that this is where, um, kinda unique in a, in a sense, it's not for fences, it's for landscapes. So, they, they elected to go with landscapes instead of putting a fence up there, seven ten Lafayette.
Any other questions or comments? Councilmember Boyer.
I just wanted to put a comment out there. Uh, and this comes, um, as a, um, the tree commission. Um, this is a good example of the use of the right plant at the right place. As you'll notice, um, along the road, you'll see the overhead lines. Putting trees under it would not be appropriate, but the use of lower shrubs, um, helps with our, um, our green canopy, and, um, also make sure that it doesn't interfere with the power lines over that head. So, more of this type of landscaping is in line with what the tree commission is trying to converge.
Thank you, Councilmember Boyer. Any other questions or comments? Councilmember Zimmer.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just have a comment as well, part of the planning. Um, I'd like to say that it stipulates, you know, that we can be having a tree tree, because, um, the fact, especially the front corner, so it could be, um, sightseeing is part of that, I think. So, um, having these limitations and also the setback of the probably, because, um, I think it was a good idea, and maybe to, written into the resolution, um, helps, uh, with enforcing the, uh, regulations.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Robertson. Any further questions? Council members and councilmen. Okay, roll call vote on Counter Resolution two thousand twenty-one dash twenty-two. Councilmember Martin.
Yes.
Councilmember Boyer.
Yes.
Councilmember Robertson.
Yes.
Councilmember Zimmer.
Yes.
Council President Glenn.
Yes.
By roll call vote of five zero in the affirmative, Counter Resolution two thousand twenty-one dash twenty-two approved by council. Item B on this evening's agenda, Counter Resolution concerning license agreement for two sixteen North Union Avenue. Councilmember, first by Council President Glenn.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to introduce Counter Resolution concerning license agreement for the use of the right of way at two sixteen North Union for a handicap ramp.
Council have a motion by Councilmember, seconded by Councilmember Robertson. This is a motion to introduce Count, Counter Resolution, two sixteen North Union Avenue. Questions or comments on the introduction? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those say nay. Motion carries five zero in the affirmative. This is gonna be Resolution two thousand twenty-one dash twenty-three. A resolution by the Mayor City Council of Haveringes, Maryland pursuant to the local government Article of the Annotated Code of Maryland, section thirty-three and thirty-four of the city charter for construct, for destruction of the handicap ramp encroaching on the city right of way, brought to the property located at two sixteen North Union Avenue. Council have a motion to adopt two thousand twenty-one dash twenty-three. Say it. First by Council President, seconded by Councilmember Robertson. Questions or comments? Council President.
Again, this Counter Resolution is, is designed to, uh, support a handicap ramp for two sixteen North Union, and it's benefited through the planning department.
Thank you very much, Council President. Any further questions or comments? Roll call vote for two thousand twenty-one dash twenty-three. Councilmember Robertson.
Yes.
Councilmember Zimmer.
Yes.
Councilmember Martin.
Yes.
Council President Glenn.
Yes.
Councilmember Boyer.
Yes.
By roll call vote of five zero in the affirmative, Resolution two thousand twenty-one dash twenty-three approved by council. Thank you very much. That'll conclude our resolutions on this evening's agenda. We do an item thirteen, which is ordinance. We do an item one, ordinance on the agenda. It'll be an ordinance for first reading, um, and this is ordinance authorized acquisition portions of Chapel Road entered into MOU for snow removal. And this is ordinance authorized acquisition portions of Chapel Road entered into an MOU for snow removal. And I will call upon the liaison to the, I'm sorry, the chair of the, Council President.
I may relate to interviews and first reading ordinance authorized acquisition of portions of Chapel Road and entering into a memorandum of understanding for snow removal.
Second. Council, I have a motion by Councilmember Zimmer, seconded by Councilman Robinson. This is a motion to introduce an ordinance concerning MOU for Chapel Road for snow removal. Questions or comments on the introduction? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion to introduce an ordinance carries by a zero and the affirmative. Council, this will be ordinance 1062. 1062. An ordinance of the Mayor of City Council of Havering Heights adopted pursuant to the authority of Article eleven E of the Maryland Constitution, the local government article of the Annotated Code of Maryland, Sections thirty-three and thirty-four of Havering Heights City Charter for that purpose of acquiring portions of Chapel Road from the county that are adjacent to parcel already annexed into the city and entering a memorandum of understanding for snow removal for those portions of Chapel Road remaining in the county. Council, I have a motion to adopt ordinance ten sixty-two on first reading.
Aye.
Second. Seconded by Councilmember Robinson. Questions or comments? Councilor Zimmer?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. For those listening at home, I just want to be clear that you understand that parameters for this, it's Chapel Road between Blenheim Farm Road and approximately thirty feet east to the intersection of Mount Pleasant Court. Mount Pleasant Court is located near the circle entering the Boy Rock Development. The city maintains this road as it is, as it runs parallel to property that has already applied to city limits. So the county will be turning this over to the city, and we will continue to provide the services that we have in the past as part of this memorandum of understanding.
Thank you very much, Councilwoman Zimmer. Any other questions or comments? Okay, Council, I have a roll call, roll call on ten sixty-two. Council President Blam?
Yes.
Councilmember Robinson? Councilmember Zimmer?
Yes.
Councilmember Boyer?
Yes.
Councilman Martin?
Yes.
By roll call vote of five zero and affirmative, ordinance ten sixty-two is adopted on first reading. Council President, would you like to have a public hearing on this?
Next meeting of September twentieth.
Okay, we will have a public hearing on this ordinance at the next council meeting scheduled for December twentieth.
Seven P.M.
At seven P.M., preceding the scheduled council meeting. Thank you very much, Council President. Thank you, Council. We're going to item number fourteen, old business. Evening, we have the old business to attend to. And it takes us to item fifteen, new business. We have several things on the docket. And item A is a budget amendment, 2022-09, for downtown infrastructure re-vocation and building. Now we'll refer to the Chair of the City's Finance Committee, which is Councilman Robinson. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, fellow council members, I move to introduce and approve Budget Amendment 2022-09.
Thank you.
Council, I have a motion by Councilman Robinson, seconded by Councilmember Zimmer. This is Budget Amendment 2022-09. Questions or comments? Councilman Robinson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, fellow council members, ladies and gentlemen here at home, I just want to maybe provide a little bit of background. So this is using some of the funding from the Arbor, the American Rescue Plan funding to get, I want to say engineering done, because it's not engineering yet, but it's developing a concept plan for the downtown revitalization effort. And it's going to be a several-month process, which is going to include a lot of input from the public, what I call sensing sessions, they had another word for it that escapes me at this moment. I think it's going to be really interesting to see what this group comes up with, what the public input is. And I encourage folks to stay tuned, stay involved, because this is really an opportunity for everyone at Havering Heights to provide their ideas of what the future of the city could look like. So it should be interesting. This is quite the opportunity that comes along once in a generation, and it's kind of exciting that we're all part of it.
Thank you very much, Councilman Robinson. Councilor Zimmer?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I also want to echo Councilmember Robinson's comments about the presentation by food design, ideas and visions for projects they've done in the past. And they laid out a project plan that encompassed three months for the preliminary ideas of design. It's a pretty quick turnaround in terms of the kind of work that they are planning, or they have planned in other cities, and we understand that they will be planning here. Except we don't know what the final product will be, but they have lots of experience. Their employees and their staff have a significant amount of expertise managing these kinds of projects. So I feel very confident that in the end we'll have a product that people will be very proud of and appreciate and have a more walkable city that honors our history and our businesses and promotes tourism and more economics within the city.
Thank you very much, Councilwoman Zimmer. Any other further questions or comments? Okay, Council, this is Budget Amendment 2022-09. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Budget Amendment 2022-09, concerning downtown infrastructure rehabilitation and resiliency, carries by a five zero affirmative. Councilmember Robinson, you have the address, Councilmember Tany?
In the front column, account number zero one dash zero 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 one dash four nine dash zero zero, fund transfers, ARPA Fund Three, two hundred thousand dollars into two column, account number zero one dash one two five one dash seven zero nine, downtown infrastructure rehab and resiliency, two hundred thousand dollars.
Mr. Doherty, are we square?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Councilman Robinson, thank you very much, appreciate it. Thank you, Council. Item B, special events?
Mr. Doherty? Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. Before you this evening, we have two special events. The first one is the annual New Year's Eve Duck Drop sponsored by the City of Havering Heights and Susquehanna Host Company. Typical of previous year's events, it'll be set up down at Compaq Point. That'll begin at eight P.M. on New Year's Eve. There will be live music, DJ music, who are Jeff Thompson. Starting at ten P.M., the fireworks will begin at the stroke of midnight. It will end thereafter, and the event will wrap on the twelfth of July. The room closures are listed in the packet, and as typical, when we address down in that area, we close off Lafayette at Lodge, or I'm sorry, Lafayette and Young Street, and then over at Compaq Point. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Doherty. Council, I have a motion to approve New Year's Eve celebration, Dr. Doherty. Second. Motion by the Council President, seconded by Councilman Robinson. Questions or comments? Councilmember Zimmer?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just have a quick question. Do you know if they're planning to livestream the fireworks they did last year? I'm sure it's different with the...
The city is not, I think the city did that last year.
Oh, it was this year.
It don't matter if there's been, no one has approached the city.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Zimmer. Any other questions or comments? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. New Year's Eve celebration and duck drop for December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-one is approved by Council of five zero and affirmative. Item number two, Havering Heights Ice Festival, Mr. Doherty?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In council, we have the, which turns out to be our annual event, the Havering Heights Ice Festival, sponsored by the Havering Heights Alliance. The setup will be on the sixteenth, I'm sorry, the fifteenth of January. And there's a catch schedule, Miss Johnson did a awesome job putting together the times of this multi-day event. The event will actually begin on Saturday at three P.M. And at eight P.M., it will continue on Sunday at noon and at four P.M. And it's important to note that there is a rain date, which is the following month, the seventeenth, which is a federal holiday. So there's, in the event that there is rain on Saturday, the event will occur on Sunday and Mondays. If there's good weather on Saturday, rain on Sunday, the event will continue on Monday. So any combination of rain will kick in the following Monday. That is by design on the application. Room closures are listed. Also, again, mapped out very well for the back of your package. The processes are included, and this has been a very successful event over the last few years. And Miss Johnson has done a wonderful job in putting this together, and we've worked out the details, I think, over the years. A little bit of trial and error for the whole and all, I think, all the cases have been worked out.
Thank you very much, Mr. Doherty. Council, I have a motion to approve Havering Heights Ice Festival.
Sue.
Second. Seconded by the Council President, seconded by Councilman Robinson. Questions or comments? Council President?
I have one quick question. I heard you say that the rain date is Monday, which is the holiday. I guess the question I have is, is that going to impact any potential deliveries to our businesses downtown on that day? I mean, we're going to tie the roads from Saturday, we're going to tie them up from Sunday. And because you guys have done such a great job on the event, I mean, it's, and I feel it's going to happen again. If this business might be capital, there's delivery by Monday morning, I don't want to just shut them down if we got work to do.
I can't speak to this, but, so that was a question I posed to the sponsoring organization, and Miss Johnson did feedback with me, and she has contacted several of the, I know of two of the restaurants, McGregor's and Coopery's, about that very issue with room closures and deliveries. Either saw that as an issue, and both supported the fact that the Monday date, if it was a fact needed or a rain date, would actually be beneficial on the tip of the Mondays or Sundays. If Miss Johnson is in the audience, if she has anything to add to this, Mr. Mayor?
Well, I think the key point is, is they reached out, and the restaurants are saying that they don't see that as a showstopper. Right now, it's only too, but, I mean, I was just concerned that I had going forward, because they've gone through a lot with COVID, so I don't want to just break your backs or the walls. Thank you.
Thank you, Council President. Any other questions or comments on the ice festival? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Havering Heights Ice Festival, January fifteenth to sixteenth, two thousand twenty-two, approved by council five zero and affirmative. Thank you very much. Congress, item sixteen, report from the Director of the Administration.
Well, thank you again, Mr. Mayor and Council. I just have one item I'd much rather bring up this evening than on the next meeting prior to the Christmas holidays. And that is, we have been notified by the city by Comcast, Xfinity, that there are going to be rate increases beginning on December twentieth. So albeit slight, they just continue to increase at about two dollars per package deal for citizens maybe signed up for within the city. So we have, we are notified each year by Comcast or Xfinity, and we are obligated to report that to the citizens.
For the record, Mr. Doherty, there seems to be a lot of rumor mill stuff that's been on, it's going to go over decades. And people think that there is monopoly in the city of Havering Heights that Comcast have a lock on cable service here, and we keep people out, and we claim, although that solicited other cable providers.
Yes, sir. So at any time, and I think this is a public service announcement, if there's any carrier that wishes to come into the city, we welcome them with open arms. And as it exists today, we have numerous occasions contacted Horizon for buying service and any other competitor of this out there, so the citizens don't feel as though this is a monopoly. And at this time, we have, we take it, we welcome.
What do, what does Horizon say to the issue? Why won't they come here?
A while ago, Councilman, it was just the cost of the infrastructure of laying in the buying lines. But as of late, that's sort of changing, just with the technology that's out there, with 5G. There's, I think the technology is moving quickly enough where even the infrastructure costs and what they were thinking of five or six or seven years ago, they feel like the technology has put them in a better position as things progress. So it wouldn't surprise me to see that in the next two or three years, we have, I don't know if it's going to be Horizon or another competitor coming in. I think a lot of us in the city are sort of experiencing Hulu and some of the other services that are provided. And I think some people taking advantage of it.
Unfortunately, there's only one I ask to be, ask for the issue. Sure. Council President?
Mr. Doherty, any plans to update some of the lines in Havering Heights? I mean, we've seen that have Comcast since Moby Dick was a guppy, and, you know, my concern is are the lines wearing down? I mean, I talk about technology, I want to make sure that as we pay, costs increase, that we're getting back for the buck.
Yeah, so on a number of occasions, citizens have complained about speed of service, and they believe where their lines haven't been replaced or upgraded. And in each case, when we get the complaint here at the city, we have a liaison with, intergovernmental affairs with Comcast, and we pass this along. So I know there is, there are different areas in the city that have varying issues with service and speed and so forth. I live in a what would be sort of a robust area, and at times our service providers' speeds are marked. So I think citywide, it's, I think there's a lot of improvement that could occur. I can't, I don't, I don't have that information to say if and when and what improvements are going to be made. We certainly will request an infrastructure update or a plan or a strategic plan is what they're looking at for improvements. Pass that along.
I just want to put something on that, too. I know we live literally a walk away from each other, and the service between the two are, it's night and day. And my neighbors, we asked for the line to be replaced. And when that happened, then it started working a lot better. I don't know if it's possible. I would be very interested in receiving Comcast a, an assessment on the age of the infrastructure. And again, their plans to modernize, because we are paying just as much as new developments in Valer, et cetera, and they are getting wonderful service, but we get antiquated service with lines going out, having to restart them repeatedly. Just like, this wind event tonight, we'll probably have to go back and then restart and go to Malaport.
The unfortunate part of where we stand is we don't, there's not a whole lot of leverage on our part. But the liaison is very responsible, although it's not always the news you want to hear, but the years passed and that's one of the cases. I guess I'll request a strategic plan and a structure.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Doherty, for fielding questions. Like I said, the only reason I brought it up is you mentioned Comcast is having rate increases. Ever since I've been involved in city service since two thousand, there's always, it pops up like seasonal. You know, there's, people, whether it's running somewhere in a coffee shop, or someone starts to turn on social media, the city has an employee that won't let anybody else, and we tell you something. You hear someone talking, that just needs backing down. That is so far from the truth, it's a complete to it. In fact, I have Horizon sell service, I live in Great Harbor. I can't use my phone at my house, I have to get in my car and drive downtown and make phone calls. The mayor of the city... The mayor of the city can't make phone calls from his house with the cell service. And I've had close friends of mine go down to the Horizon shop and say, well, I don't have good service, and they blame the city. The city's fault. Let me tell you also, these utility companies, we would, like Mr. Gambitori said, we will welcome them with open arms, any competition, any day of the week. We will pull out the brickwork. So, you know, so if you ever hear people say, you know, the city has monopoly, the city won't let them, there's some kind of sweetheart deal, and that's, that's just people being greedy. So, just want everybody to know that, you know, if Comcast bill goes off, it's Comcast. Okay, so, hopefully, hopefully competition's on, that's all I can say. But the city, your city representatives would do anything we can to help make the plane feel more competitive. Thank you, Mr. Gambitori. Congress, over to, uh, Department of, uh, Planning and, uh, Director, uh, Mr. Shane Bren.
Good evening, Mayor. Council members, citizens, just wanted to update you. A couple months ago, the council enacted a more important pain management clinics. And we had one previously enacted, but this one gives a little bit more time. And I've had an opportunity to sit and speak with Mrs. Shaq, and I have prepared some draft, um, comments related to that, after doing some research, and I provided that to her in the coming weeks. Hope to get with her and, uh, take a look at that, and just get that in front of council in the new year. So, I just wanted to give you an update on that, since we did enact that more for it. Also, if any of the council members get any comments or questions or concerns related to, you know, tree clearing in Woolly Rock, uh, they can forward those, you can forward those to me at any time. There is a significant amount of clearing that is going on, and we have gotten some phone calls from residents that are a little alarmed. But, uh, this tree clearing was always anticipated, especially with the clearing for the continuation of Holy Rock Parkway, uh, which we're very excited that we'll be seeing that connection finally made for the Holy Rock Parkway Loop. Mr. Woody is reviewing plans, and that bridge should be delivered in the coming weeks, and installed after we have all the approvals and permits in place, so that's very exciting. But yes, there is a lot of tree clearing going on, and it's a little alarming, so, uh, feel free to forward those folks to me, and I can explain to them a little bit about the process and what's happening. Lastly, also, a bit of an apology to the Planning Commission and Board of Appeals members. We've had to schedule and cancel a few meetings, uh, simply just because things weren't lining up with our applicants or their attorneys. So, uh, we do have some cases that will be coming in front of them in the new year. I don't foresee anything in, uh, the rest of this year, uh, but we do have some scheduled for, for the new year. And, uh, we'll keep posted on those, and, uh, lots of, uh, exciting stuff going on in planning roles, and we're working on various different things. So, various different initiatives, not the least wishing a comprehensive plan, and hopefully, we'll be, uh, giving you an update on that in the new year as well. And that's all that.
Excellent. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Appreciate the report. Good evening, this is Bridget Johnson, Director of Economic Development.
Good evening, Mayor, Council and citizens. A quick update from my department. Uh, one, uh, myself and our, um, consultant, Juan Debocker, uh, will submit a grant to the EBA this Friday by December fifth, that's to the federal government, in the amount of six hundred and fifty thousand dollars. A grant is a wish, but we feel very confident in our application and our, uh, ability to receive this funding. This money would complement the money being used by all of us to, um, assist with our downtown renovation efforts. Um, we are looking to fund the impetus for that beginning of Bloom Street. We are also looking to update our parking lots with solar lighting and a possible future, uh, shuttle bus. It's not a private bus, um, that could cross over about forty, and then to Northern Happy Grace. So, we're submitting that grant this Friday. We should hear some feedback by February. Um, we're excited. I think our chances are that. The, um, also, we are launching out of the Department of Economic Development and Tourism in January. First half of race business, the online publication will include information on economic development, tourism, and Shane's grant for the Henry Holiday Road projects that we are happening in the annexation. And we're confident that this connection that we've got goes out now. This will be a long-term publication, uh, limited printed copy, and we want to see how it goes. And if successful, it's something that we would do once a quarter. So, look for that to become a theme with the Happy Grace business beat. I would also like to recognize, uh, Lori and her volunteers in our tourism department, part of the work that they did, uh, this week as well, first Friday, happy jolly season in the Christmas tree, and everyone's downtown, people, all of you. I'll do some hard effort in planning that, went into that, and they really did a good job, and I wanted to, uh, recognize them and congratulate them on their efforts as well. Um, we do also, uh, we have two new businesses that opened in the city of Happy Grace. Blooms Active Boutique is at three twenty-two St. John Street. And then they, Flores, it is sharing a space with the Wedding Boutique of Maryland. Uh, the Wedding Boutique of Maryland has been in that space for a couple of years now. They have now added a Flores. This is a good job, um, for a good addition to the city that will be recently launched, and they have a Flores. And then we have Blast from the Past. They're at one nineteen with Washington Street. They are a retro candy store. I purchased every piece of candy in there on Friday night during their parade. I took three or four other people in there. It's a great addition as well, and they took the place of the Teal Antler. Um, we didn't really want to leave the Antler, but we did, and we were able to, uh, occupy that vacant space, which is also a good thing. We have an announcement coming soon, probably with council leading, uh, a small business that is moving from one location into a smaller space in the downtown business district. And this is also good news, because we did have a setback to going out of business completely or moving to another city. Because we have a commission to give their name, but if they will retain them, that's part of our efforts in economic development. This business attraction, medical business retention, and retention means we're not trying to lose any, uh, any competitors, any more, for the larger city to be in, so happy, but, thank you.
Thank you very much for the update, Ms. Johnson. All good stuff. Thank you. Good evening, Mr. DeHorton, Director of Finance. How are you, sir?
Good evening, Mayor, Council, citizens. Uh, I want to thank the council for their approval of the project in March twenty-two, April. There are very few projects that have the potential to improve the city as much as this particular project, uh, and those. Echo or positive comments I heard. In terms of the, um, current financial condition, the general fund is sitting at a little over eight point two million dollars, and we're about one point one million dollars ahead of budget expectations at this time. Uh, we started the year about one one three five million ahead. Income taxes have been a little bit behind schedule by about six hundred thousand dollars. But I received notice today that, um, four hundred and twenty-five of it will be coming in the next week from the, for the November receipt, so it's slowly hitting itself back on track. It's still a little long, but, um, it, that is welcome news. Grants are running about four hundred and fifty thousand dollars under where we thought we'd get this time. But I do believe most of that is just getting the work started. It's been well publicized. Materials and construction open, getting art, getting plants, and I think that's more of the cause of it, and it will be a matter of when, not if, we'll get this green bill. So, I expect that to right itself. salaries and benefits are running about five hundred and twenty thousand under budget, uh, mostly due to vacancies. Um, and our real property passes, uh, as I noted before, about a hundred thousand over where they were expected at this time. Fund nine, the water sewer fund, the fund balance is sitting at about five hundred and forty thousand dollars. An increase of homeless one point three million dollars year to date. The operating profit is about one point four five million dollars. We have collected homeless one point eight million dollars in capital cost fees this year already. Uh, we're way ahead of schedule, and it's really looking strong. And we have spent, uh, just under two million in capital projects and debt service, over as anticipated by the budget. Marina fund is sitting at a fund balance of a little over eight hundred thousand dollars. And it's still a slight decrease of a hundred and forty thousand year to date. That's much better than I reported to you in the second meeting last time. As the, yes, let's see, coming in the door, that is coming around. Uh, the operating loss right now is forty, just under forty-five thousand dollars, which is about, just where it was the last time we called. And, uh, we've spent just under a hundred thousand dollars in the capital projects, uh, on the marina to, uh, to help, um, improve that operating. That's getting ready for distribution and things coming out. Uh, so the fundraiser will do in Rome, uh, and that's my, uh, financial reform condition of the city at this time. Any further questions? Thank you, Jim.
Council on Questions, Mr. DeHorton? Thank you very much, sir. Good evening, Mr. Woody, Director of Public Works.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. The thing is, while we did meet with DNR today to identify a competition projects, and, uh, we're working on one of those, which is fully run, uh, which we're going to do, uh, a state restoration project, starting at the Ross property, and we're going to use it and take that all the way around Wilson Street. And then to set up, um, we walked the site with them, and they were very positive about the project. And the funding will be submitted, uh, to DNR on December fifteen, that we can take a listen to that. As well, we also took in the property on Dallas Street. I mean, you know, the city has a house there. Um, in the process of carrying that, we, we need to disconnect the electric. And, um, that property has a big belly in back, and very good steam, like, um, RSC regenerative school project there. Tap in and reduce the roads that take in place from all the outfalls that are, uh, which is a big ditch. And, uh, so that project was also identified, and we were extremely, uh, proud of it as well. And we'll be moving in, we do have some content planned put together, and we put that package together, and that will be DNR. As I said, it has to be in before December fifteen, and so we're looking at that. The Old Bailey Wood Line project is just about done. Uh, they pressurized the line, uh, equal, got coordinated, and they're going to do the connections tomorrow, and put stats under, we can't be up, and should be running, so that project will. And kind of check off the completion list, and that should help with our dimension, but also, um, one of the things to give with those parts of resiliency that we have to leave on, from the roots, is for, is for building grid, shut down our leadership, particularly shut down industrialize. This allows us to back feed the system, uh, through the UDW. Uh, the other next, uh, that was thought by Katner, so the next project moving forward is the Wood Line replacement on the root street. That goes from Adam all the way down to, you know, St. John's. Um, then the dredging contract has been awarded, uh, that contract has also been funded. You've submitted all the signs, uh, comments, for both the, uh, construction contract as well as, we need to, we need a refund, we need to, we need to sign some, you know, exit. And so, we probably put in a budget from there to, um, transfer it to, you know. Uh, the other thing, we did get the tank, you submitted, uh, we need another, did come in on the tank replacement, but it wasn't working up. And unfortunately, we got one, I think what scared the contractors is, is the delivery time in the tank is, it's always, it's like thirty-two weeks. Almost three weeks, it's a little, it's a little, it's a long thing. Contractors are, I think, you know, fearful that their costs are going to go up, and, you know, it's not easy to compensate for the wait that long to do a contract. So, then we got one page, um, talking about Patrick, when he, he's, he's been, you know, uh. And then, uh, two sewer projects, Erie Street, Lafayette Street, that's what we had, replacing projects, and hopefully, we received, uh, a ton as well. Lafayette, good projects, um, we just had three day last Friday, Lafayette, Erie Street, this, uh, this project going through towards, uh, construction. Lafayette, I think it's really just going to be a line, like we get up from Francis Street, uh, this, uh, these, uh, plastic lines, this is the same remain. And then we'll be also, uh, patching the handles as well, the D I I I system. And then Erie Street has some, sort of, some sewer main that has to be replaced, and also a line, we talked about, I don't know, talked about split, in the, uh, in that eighteen inch, uh, or split the eighteen inch sewer main, that has to be repaired, so we need to do that. And then, uh, the pump station for the, uh, number three project, pump station at the National Guard has been, hopefully, advertised that project for construction, all purpose, and the nation, and, uh, including. And with that, uh, last thing is the leeway forms, uh, which can view the plans, finalize the move of sewer plants, and, you know, do public works, and do the process, and bonding. Something that I need to use at seventy cases is like, like, three hundred units, like, there's always things like three hundred, thirty-one units, or, or, eight, two, two, eight, eight, two, three, two, and then, it's like, three hundred thirty-one units, so that thing is, you know, it's, there, there's something else on.
That's all I have. Thanks. Do you have any questions? Council on Questions, Mr. DeHorton?
When should the construction at National Guard pump station occur?
It's probably going to occur, I was just going to say, probably a little later than that, because we still work through it, and, and, and then, you know, get the contractors, you know, get the, the proposal coming in December, January, and then make, I preview the proposal, with the contractors sometime, everywhere.
Now, the pump station, is that off as you're going out, can it step off to the right?
No, that's a pump station that's just nicely in, in the, uh, National Guard, so we add, add in, uh, yeah, we add, I put it to the water.
Okay.
Governor Martin?
Mr. Woody, the Marina, the, the.
The tanks for the marina for the fuel, I know we're running in the policy tank. Any update on the improvement of the fuel tanks for the marina?
Well, that's basically what we're doing, is we were, we had a, we had a proposal, we only had one contractor fit on the project. And so, the issue really is the pipeline, like, I think what scares the contractors, I guess we have to work it out with some kind of escalator clause. I think the fact is that it was thirty-two week delivery time, but they're afraid of it blocking the gate of price for now, in thirty-two weeks now. They gave it, it's called, I think it was, it was people, and that's, this is the second time we did that project now, and we moved out, and we, we, uh. So, we had a couple of people that, you know, sit in the three-day meetings, and, and, and then, and then we just, we changed the line.
Thank you, sir. Uh, for questions? Good evening, Chief Wolf.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Um, I do also want to thank, um, the folks that put on the Holly Jolly parade. It was really, kind of a really nice event, a lot of people, I don't think, I've seen that many people in that kind of area before. Uh, I know there were a lot of people from Happy Town walking through after, a lot of people stayed after, maybe on Santa Claus and, and, and the parade itself. So, that was phenomenal, it was really nice, um, nice, nice event, nice, nice weather. But with that, I also want to just remind those, we personally, our drivers, just be careful for pedestrians that are crossing. What we found, because it was nighttime, a lot of pedestrians were not going in crosswalks, they were dodging, getting out between vehicles, that type of thing. Um, myself, Sergeant Beth, had the practice with her, at Warren and, um, and Union Avenue, and many times, we kind of, we kind of cringe, trying to get, especially the young kids, they use the, uh, pedestrian crosswalk. Um, so, not only do we remind the drivers just to be careful when pedestrians turn in crosswalks, but we also want pedestrians to use the crosswalks. So, it's just a friendly, friendly reminder, because I know we do have some events that do occur in the evening or after, after hours or in the steps. So, that's just a reminder. The other thing I want to mention, I don't think it's going to be in great shakes, uh, which is kind of listening to the weather this weekend. I've heard everything from light dusting on Wednesday to about three inches. I don't think any of it is, we're looking for worthy, or a mild or bright Monday, or anything like that. But I mention that because it doesn't even matter what type of precipitation we get in the winter time. People have a tendency to be tanning, and there's a little bit of, of dusting on the ground. So, we're just saying, if you don't have to go out, don't go out. Um, just saying that, and relax, and, um, and if you do have to go out, just stay calm and drive sensibly, if that's possible. So, and then the last thing I want to mention, um, So, and then the last thing I want to mention, um, on December the first, uh, former chief Brady Holt passed away. Um, Chief Holt was a phenom- phenomenal man, um, he dedicated his life to public safety. Uh, he retired from the Maryland State Police as a major, and when he retired, he became the city of Happy Years to be a chief police. He, uh, was the chief of police from nineteen ninety-six to two thousand five, I actually followed Chief Holt after he retired. So I just ask everybody, his hero list tomorrow, if you look today, his hero list tomorrow, in Pennsylvania, let me just ask everybody, um, Chief Holt.
Thank you very much for speaking, appreciate the update. Move on to, uh, I have seventeen, this is from Mayor's office, a couple of things real quick. I'd like to go back to the weekend before Thanksgiving and talk about the Great Havering Grace Oyster Feast, which was a very successful event. Uh, shattered all records for previous attendance, sold over five hundred tickets, put over six thousand dollars into the pockets of our local nonprofits who were participating. Uh, the top three, uh, receivers of, of proceeds were the American Legion, Lockhouse, and Independence, and then the state commission, but there were fifteen all to. I remember the way it worked was, uh, for every ticket that was bought to support the oyster feast, fifteen dollars of each ticket went to, uh, the, a nonprofit of the purchasers' choice. So again, over five hundred people were there, we actually had to stop selling tickets, uh, several days before the event. But, um, it was a great success, and we hope everybody comes out and supports it next year, for the time. And I agree with Chief Walter, the Holly Jolly, uh, Friday, this past Friday, the Christmas parade and the tree lighting was of something I've never seen before in the city of Havergrace. Been around, uh, doing this for thirteen years, and when it first started off, it was about maybe one or two blocks, mostly fire trucks and the parade, a couple of police cars, ambulance, and, uh, maybe a few politicians. And the parade would start, be there in about ten minutes, and the tree would be lit, and then everybody would be gone, and having by six-twenty. So we have really, we have really, really changed how we, uh, how we embrace the holidays around here in the city of Havergrace. The parade itself was over thirty minutes long, there were a lot of entries, and it was, it was great, it was, I mean, of course you got your, your, you know, awesome, such my host company, ambulance board, police department, and you have a local volunteers, but you also had, you know, the high school band was playing, and the Boy Scouts, and it's just, it's, it's a very good community parade, um, just all kind of folks, right? I mean, I could go on and on, argue that the sons of, uh, Italian-American businessmen, just, just groups of people from all over the county, coming here to celebrate the holidays, which is really what it's all about. You know, just bringing everyone here at the end of the year and saying, hey, this is awesome, we love Havering Grace, we love the holiday season, people had a great time. I tell you what, though, uh, there was more people there than I've ever seen on the first Friday. I mean, we, I was looking, when I was, before we lit the tree, and, and Santa Claus came up on stage with me, and I looked down towards, towards, uh, the American Legion, then I looked south towards, uh, Congress Street, you couldn't see, uh, you couldn't see a, a patch of concrete. Uh, people were ready to, to bring in the holiday season, it was so wonderful, and, uh, God, I met people from Towson, I met people in Wilmington, and I ran into a couple that asked me to take a picture of them, and I were from Lancaster, Pennsylvania, and it was just, it was great. Well, it's who we are, it's who we are in Havering Grace, we, 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 you know, set the example, um, as Pastor Snodgrass said earlier. We live on burning, the Haven of Grace, and that's who we are, especially in the holidays, and people wanna come here now, and it's good. So, if you haven't had a chance, um, check out the Christmas tree downtown, also, I may have mentioned this at the last meeting, uh, but it's off and running right now, the entire promenade is now lit in Christmas lights. From the Gold Star Memorial, where the lighthouse is, all the way to the Ty, uh, the yacht base at Times Park, both sides. It's almost a mile of lights, so, um, and it's lit, so go down and see it, uh, it's, it's definitely a spectacle. If anybody out there has a, uh, has a drone, first one to take a drone shot and post it on Facebook, I guarantee it, somebody's gonna share it. So, uh, it'll look, it'll look pretty cool, it'll look pretty cool. We don't have drones, people get a little touchy when you're guarding, has drones, but anyway, have a private drone out there somewhere, and have the, uh, have the, have the, have the. And so at the, during the parade, if you, uh, if you attended the parade and you happened to see two awesome looking electric trolleys, those, that is the first public debut of a brand new, new and improved Havering Grace electric trolley program. Uh, the trolleys were delivered, uh, right before Thanksgiving, and they made their debut for the Christmas parade, and they will now be put into storage, uh, out the UDW, and put on a triple charger until, uh, springtime, and we anticipate, uh, the deployment of our trolley program sometime in late spring, definitely before the Fetterday, Fetterday weekend, which is the first weekend in May. But, um, we know the route, uh, and the designs and all that stuff, we just need to start putting out route signs, bus stops. We need our bus drivers, or trolley drivers, so there's a lot of things that'll be coming between now and April, I'd imagine, so if anybody's interested in participating and helping out the trolley program, or driving a trolley bus, uh, just stay tuned to the city website, okay, we'll, we'll be putting out announcements as we work, work through this. And I also want to personally thank Council this evening for supporting the downtown infrastructure rehabilitation and resiliency project. Um, as everyone knows, City of Havering Grace, along with every city, almost, in the city, state, and this whole country, received American Rescue Plan funding. Um, and as I said earlier, you know, when we first heard about this money, the money was supposed to be for a broad variety of different things, um, but then as the money was released from the US Treasury, the, uh, the, the uses became much more narrowed to what we could use it for, but one thing that we knew we could use it for straight up was water and sewer infrastructure, and stormwater management. So, the thirteen point eight billion dollars we have, a, a great majority of it is gonna go to just that, because, uh, if anybody's gonna pay attention, then what we've been saying here for the last decade is, is we need to address water and sewer issues. However, with that said, we also have a, a great opportunity to, um, to improve, to reimagine, to revitalize the, the heart of our downtown. Which, you know, when I say the heart of our downtown, I'm talking St. John Street, Washington Street, uh, Huntington, Green Street, Franklin Street proper, you know, what we consider the historic downtown district. And all those pipes are over a hundred years old, water lines, sewer lines, the lateral lines coming from the old buildings out to the middle of the street. And stormwater management, excuse me, stormwater management, that also runs on the ground as well. So we will be using a good portion of that, our money, to, to fix all that, so we never have to dig up those roads again, at least, not in our lifetime, hopefully. But when we put the roads back together, and it's gonna be, it's gonna be a great undertaking, a lot of engineering, but when we put everything back together, we have a chance to really make the downtown extremely unique and beautiful. Imagine a coastal Chesapeake colonial look, with a twenty-first century ingenuity, especially when it comes to, uh, being good stewards of the environment, the way the traffic heads and flows and transports people through the community, uh, so, and as Councilman Robertson said, uh, there's probably a lot of public input. My administration has selected a, a Maryland-based company called Tool Design, T O O L E, as the, uh, design company to help us with this revitalization resiliency project, and there will be an opportunity for a lot of public input, and a lot of the, stay tuned, within the next month, there'll be announcements of how you can get involved if you wanna learn the process. But this is a Havering Grace opportunity, and it's gonna be done by, you know, Havering Grace people, it's gonna be reflective of what we wanna be. So please stay tuned, and I appreciate Council's, uh, budget amendment tonight to get the ball rolling on this project. And finally, if you tuned in at the last council meeting, I put another chalkboard talk about the redistricting, uh, councilmatic, uh, redistricting updates for Harper County. So tomorrow night, December seventh, the Harper County Council will, uh, be voting on the redistricting maps, uh, that they proposed. Uh, as, as I said at the last council meeting, uh, they're not using the map that the commission recommended, they're using their own map. Uh, we have asked them, I've sent messages and asked them if they would introduce amendments, so I'm hoping that they will introduce amendments to make the, uh, to bring back the, or at least resemble the redistricting commission map, which is the map that the City of Havergrace and City of Happy Years support. And the redistricting commission support, so, uh, hopefully tomorrow at the county council meeting, they'll do the right thing, and, um, and reflect the law to people, and respect the process that's prescribed by law. So, um, I'll update you on that, because I always will update you, that's what I do, I'll update you on what they're doing, so. Um, with that said, I appreciate the, uh, Council's support this evening on everything, we have a lot of legislation to go through, and we will go on to Council comments. And so, Council President.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I too would like to, um, extend, uh, my gratitude to all the members that worked so diligently, and took the, um, Holly Jolly Christmas three-day event together, especially the Independent State Commission. Uh, we had over forty trees this year, um, so each year we get, it gets bigger and bigger, um, I don't have a number for, um, exactly how much money was taken in, um, to support the Independent State Commission, and kind of subsequently our Independent State Parade. Um, but, uh, it's a lot of work for everyone who is on that commission, and especially, um, Karen Martin and Christie Goldstein, but also the other members. So, um, I just wanna really, uh, express my gratitude to them, um, for the wonderful, and also, uh, the new location, the Legion, uh, worked out very well. Um, we had a lot of space there, and, uh, it seemed to be that people stayed longer, um, sat around, spoke to each other, um, it just seemed a little bit more social than when we had a, a smaller venue. So, um, I think it makes for a, you know, uh, good recommendation for future years. Uh, the parade was also, um, more than I was expecting in terms of, I know I, I know it's a success, but, um, I, I don't know that I've ever seen many people that, you know, and they really intend themselves, especially the children, and, and, uh, to see the parents, and they were such a family. Uh, I also want to thank, uh, the mayor's mom for her continued, uh, interest in service in the art commission. Sorry she couldn't be here this evening, but, uh, I certainly appreciate, uh, the work that she does. That commission, uh, is also in need of some additional volunteers, and, uh, everyone on it works quite hard, uh, and diligently to, uh, put on art events, and to volunteer at, uh, different events within the city to, uh, support the arts. So again, if anyone is interested in being on the art commission, please let us know, and, uh, we'll get you an application. Uh, that's really all I have for this evening.
Thank you very much, Councilwoman Zoom. Good evening, Councilman Roberts.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, fellow councilmembers, city staff, ladies and gentlemen here at home. Um, first off, the Reed Across America event will be taking place December eighteenth at two PM. Uh, there are two separate locations, each location will have, um, almost the exact same ceremony, but, uh, this is just to make sure that we, we cover as many events as possible. So Angel Hill and Mount Aaron Cemetery, December eighteenth at two PM, uh, will be the kickoff for that. Um, there will be a ceremonial reeplane by all branches of, of military service, except for, uh, Space Force, no, there's no any space cadets yet. Um, but the public at large is invited to, uh, you know, attend, and after the ceremonial reeplanes, you know, you'll be given wreaths and, uh, the ability to go out, and we have stakes for everybody in the cemetery that you can just attach the wreath to. So it, it's not a long, uh, time, maybe about, uh, an hour in total, but it's really a cool event, and we're gonna cover eight hundred wreaths, and remember our, our vets, so, uh, come on out, it's a great time. Um, the parade, the parade and the jubilee really got me in the mood last week for Christmas, I mean, it was a quick shift from Thanksgiving, um, and, and what we had going on with yours and these, which again, that was a phenomenal event as well, but, uh, the, the jubilee and the holiday parade really got me in the mood, full of spirit, and I thank everyone that's done everything, you know, leading up to those events this past month, uh, has been really great, and really appreciate the dedicated hours and the volunteers and city staff. Uh, a reminder that the Candlelight Tour will be taking place this coming Saturday, December seventh, December eleventh at four PM. Uh, starts at four PM, I think it ends at nine, if you're not familiar with what that is, it's a fundraiser for the Lockhouse Museum, where you go through, uh, people's homes in downtown. It's supposed to be to check out the holiday decorations, everybody does it just to be nosy, and, uh, my wife put us on the tour this year, which has meant that I have been very busy, um, you know, in my little bit of downtime trying to clean and decorate, and I promise that by Saturday, decorations will be, uh, somewhat presentable, so, anyway, um, it should be a good event, and, uh, again, it's raising money for a good cause. So, December eleventh, four PM. Um, Economic Development Advisory Board will be meeting next Wednesday, December fifteenth, uh, here in Council Chambers at four PM. And I'd also like to echo what the mayor said, because I think it's really important that folks show up for tomorrow's public hearing at County Council Chambers. Uh, tomorrow, December seventh, I don't have the time, on the, I have a calendar, anyone has that on, uh, six forty-five, six forty-five, so, six forty-five. Um, you know, it's important to make sure that we're, we're being represented, a, a lot of folks show up to the county council meetings now, and the school board meetings now, and, you know, wanna talk about rigged elections, and, you know, uh, vote counts and all this nonsense. But your voice is being, uh, quieted down by this exact process that's going on, this is real, um, so show up and be heard. And, Mr. Mayor, I think that's it.
Thank you very much for your time, Councilman Roberts.
Good evening, Councilman Martin. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Council President, Council members, citizens here, and, um, Water and Sewer Commission will be meeting on the tenth at three o'clock. Tourism Advisory Board is meeting the fifteenth at ten AM. Um, we are now full, thank you, Ms. Johnson, for stepping up, it builds that commission. Uh, Water and Sewer, though, we actually have two openings, we had a member who just can't put the time in anymore, and another one who is retired and traveling, so we wish them both well. But there are now two openings, we're on the Water and Sewer, there is one opening on the Ethics Commission, and we'd like to see some, more people come up and volunteer. Havering Grace is great with our volunteer efforts, and I'd like to see some people on that. The Maryland Municipal League Legislation Dinner is in Bel Air on December sixteenth, so we will have a chance to meet both the delegates and senators, they usually come to that, so we can talk about the legislative agenda we'd like to see and our concerns coming up into twenty twenty-two. And, uh, the other thing for that night is also going to be, there are two people that receive scholarships, they will be there to be, receive their scholarships, and perform a presentation. With that, I have.
Thank you very much, Councilman Martin. Good evening, Councilman Gordon.
Thank you, Mayor, um, so, jump on with, um, James said, um, in addition to the tour, there's also gonna be a boutique at the Lockhouse, and that's on Saturday and Sunday. Um, Saturday is from nine to five, Sunday is a lot of different, um, it's a lot, good opportunity to get some really cute things, um, for those extra guests that you need. Um, there is a lot of class, but there's also a little bit of food boutique there, too. I want to, um, have a huge thank you to everyone who is involved with the Holly Jolly First Fridays. Um, I, I don't know if you guys are planning to have that many people, but I would say that the way that, um, the police handled the amount of people within town was excellent. I know many times that, um, for. I know many times that for Fourth of July, we've had challenges, but I didn't hear one complain at all, people were complaining there wasn't anywhere to park. But thank goodness we have the parking down here at the old high school. It was just wonderful, and I especially want to give a huge thank you and appreciation to Mr. and Mrs. Falls for coming all the way from the North Pole to come and see us. It's just absolutely wonderful, and Mrs. Falls, I absolutely, Jesus, for this. And I'm so glad that Mr. Falls, for this, for every year, here to have the great. And finally, I want to, absolutely, our council mandate, redistricting for Harbor County, very important. But as we sit here down in Annapolis, they're also talking about our federal redistricting, and we're going to have a leader change there, too. The way the legislation that was, came out of committee today has us Havering Grace and portions of Havergraze in District One, which is the Eastern Shore District. And it's kind of like a bit of a switch, change from how things are. Currently, our district is what I would absolutely call gerrymandered, going down the line and kind of wrapping around Baltimore a little bit and getting some short leads. I would say, again, it's, it's a stretch how some of this is put together. What you would naturally think of for Havering Grace, maybe an actual line would be I-95. Not all of it is. So, depending on what actually gets passed in Annapolis, everybody within the community needs to kind of look at what the final map looks like, because we are on the cusp of two congressional victories. And again, I encourage you to try to reach out to your members of the delegation. I believe they're all in agreement that we need to keep communities together. And ironically, in Annapolis, they like the idea of the Havergraze and Havering Grace. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Porter. Business with Council President.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and fellow councilmembers. First and foremost, I want to take this opportunity to send my personal thanks out to all the valuable volunteers. Unfortunately, I couldn't miss, I couldn't make the big event last Wednesday at the Van Nuys Red. Unfortunately, I was down for the count with bronchitis and couldn't tend, but I just want to take this opportunity to thank you for all you do, we mean so much to this community, and we could do what we do each and every day if it weren't for you. Two, I missed the festivities, I missed the Fourth of July of the travel. You know, very disappointing, but I'm on my way to recovery, something I'm going to get there. I want to send my thoughts and prayers out to Chief Holt and his family. His family, I want to just thank you from the bottom of my heart for sharing Chief Holt with us. For those that have been around Havering for a long time, we will always cherish that. My thoughts are out with Councilmember Ray Sacher. Being the trooper he is, he's been chiming into this meeting tonight, I mean, he was a sick puppy, but he was chiming in, but he just did send me a note. So, so anyway, he just sent a message that he wasn't feeling the best, that he was going to get some rest and go to bed, so our thoughts and prayers are with you, Jimmy. And, you know, and last but certainly not least, my buddy Rick, you got your bracelet on? You continue to be our thoughts and prayers, keep the faith brother, and in the words of one of my favorites, NCAA basketball coaches of all time, Jimmy V, don't give up, don't ever give up. That's all I have for here.
Thank you very much, Council President. Council President, we're going to move on to item number nineteen, so if we move into closed session, for legal, legal consultation, City Attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Under the Open Meetings Act, General Provision Article three, that's three oh five, I move that as an item nineteen, Council will go into the closed session on Monday, December sixth, two thousand twenty-one, at eight fifty PM. This meeting will be closed under General Provision Article three, that's three oh five, for to consult with council to obtain legal advice and to consult with staff, consultants, and other individuals about pending or potential litigation. The reasons for the closing of the meeting are, the discussions surrounding the communications with the city attorney for legal advice, the facts derived from staff and others, and determining legal strategy for litigation purposes is in touch with confidentiality under the attorney's client privilege. The city council will not resume an open session after the closed session. That's my motion moving forward, Mr. Mayor.
Sir. By council motion by Council President, second by Councilman Roberts, and motion to move into a closed session for legal consultation with the city attorney. All those that favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Motion moving to closed session, attorney's attorney of this meeting, that's five zero affirmative. Before we move on, item number twenty, I do want to, just, as you know me, I'm your resident history teacher mayor, and I just want to bring it to everybody's attention, maybe tomorrow on December seventh, just give a moment of reflection as we, our country observes the eighteenth anniversary of Pearl Harbor. President of the United States has ordered the flags, American flag to half-staff, and as a result, all of our flags are at half-staff. So, in case you're wondering why, just take a moment to think about that momentum statement eighty years ago. So, council have a motion to adjourn? Council President, second by Councilman Martin. All those that favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Motion to adjourn, the meeting of December sixth, two thousand twenty-one, carries five zero affirmative, time is eight fifty-two. Thank you very much, everyone, be safe.